Test, test, test.
Can any of y'all hear me now? We have an audio problem.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? This is Gavin.
Can hear you great, Gav. And this is Stephen Strickland.
Okay.
Are we waiting for some folks to get started? Got it. Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, they're having trouble at the courthouse.
They're acting like that we've got trouble on our end. Can everybody hear me? Put your thumbs up if you can hear me. All right. Excellent. Well, that's on their end now. Somebody send them a text if you got their cellphone.
Yeah, I believe they acknowledge they have audio issues on their end.
They got, they got Karen's podium view that has now got too many mics in one room.
I was wondering if that might be the case.
It should work okay if you've got two, two cameras. You should have two separate audio connections.
Karen, your background looks so inviting.
Thank you. This is my, it's my office, but I, I do a lot of Zoom stuff all day long. So I have my, my Zoom background ready to go. You know, the, the messy stuff is out of the way of the camera.
Yeah, we, I have one that I'll use with Xnet system. Sometimes it makes it look like we're at a trade show and we've, we've got all of our, our logos in the background. It's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's, this is, this is actually I'm lucky because I've got some shelving behind me and it makes a good, makes a good backdrop, but.
Yeah.
But some of the video backgrounds are really fun. Some of the virtual backgrounds, I should say.
Where's your, where's your office at?
In my home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I can hear you now, Brad.
So.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes. It's, is it possible that your audio is, is connected by Bluetooth and maybe is connecting to two different devices at once?
My understanding is that the, the panel setup is all hardware.
Okay.
But everybody seems to be able to hear me.
It sounds like a different mic is picking you up. Maybe not the one that's nearest to you, but I don't know. You're good. This is going to be a short meeting. We're probably, we can probably manage.
Yeah, we might break our 18 minute record if we get on track.
I feel like it's a present for the holidays that that one thing got postponed. So.
Oh, yeah. We better have our, but we better have some coffee ready. Our planning commission meeting in January.
Well, I'd be, I'd rather do it in 2021. I'm, I'm finished with 2020. Maybe it'll be better.
Maybe it's this.
Yeah, Brad, we got, we, Brad? Yeah, we can hear you now. I didn't know.
So if I point towards the laptop, we might be able to, to make it work.
I think it might be this.
Oh, that, that could be.
I think it might be the webcam is picking you up.
Oh, okay.
Can you guys hear me better or Brad?
Both about, sorry.
Okay.
No, Guy, you're coming in better than Brad is.
Yeah, I agree. I think Guy's stronger.
Can you hear me at all?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're, we're hearing you from the back at the computer because your podium mic is still showing muted.
Well, okay, the podium view is actually not a mic. So, so actually.
Now, the other thing we could do is we could kill all these microphones and unmute that.
I think you're still going to get feedback.
Okay. All right.
Let's see if we can do it.
We're going to take a swing here. I'll save the speech. First order of business is the minutes from the November meeting. If everybody would take a look and do we have any corrections, modifications or changes?
Brad, I move that we approve the minutes as written.
All right.
Second.
So we have a motion from Penny.
Yep.
And a second from.
Scott.
From Scott? All right. Is anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our first item on the agenda. There we go. Amendments to Chapter 11.01 Variances of the City of Bogart Zoning Ordinance. Got it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You have before you this evening an amendment to Chapter 11.01 of the Bogart Zoning Ordinance. The city has requested to amend their variances in their city Bogart zoning ordinance to mimic the county's UDC variance process. And that is what you have before you this evening. It mimics the UDC and gives administrative variance ability to, to staff as well. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Is there anyone on Zoom from the public who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to these changes?
Just a quick question. Guy, did I understand from our conversation that this does mimic the county and Bogart City will be the same now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Perfect.
All right. Normally I go by order, but since this is a Bogart-specific area, I'll, I'll defer to Gavin. Do you have any questions or comments other than the ones you just made?
No, I approve. I think so.
And Mike, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Nathan?
You're on mute.
No questions or comments?
No comments.
Um, I have a question. Excuse me. Um, Ok, Okinawa County, what are you going to do about the, the, the nigglets running around?
She's in the public and she just joined.
Oh, okay. All right.
Her name is Donna.
Oh, you need, I think you need to mute her.
I think you need to press.
I think she's a Zoom bomber.
Think if you press Alt F4. If, if you press Alt F4, it kicks people out that you don't need in there.
Ouch.
So we have the volume now? Wow, can you hear it? Can y'all hear me now? We appear to be in group. Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, I can hear you very well.
Thank you. All right. Now, we had closed the public hearing.
Yes, yes, I can, I can hear you. Yes, yes, I can.
All right. We had closed the public hearing and Penny, I believe we had.
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, and I can't hear you anymore.
Thank you. Penny, do you have any questions or comments?
None.
Karen?
None for me.
Steve?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
All right. In that case, if there are no further comments or questions, I'll call for a motion.
I'm making motion to approve. It's Gavin.
A motion to approve by Gavin.
This is Stephen Strickland. I'll second that motion for approval.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Gavin.
Who's that? Me? Yes.
All right. Motion is approved unanimously. Next item is amendments to Article 2, Use of Land Use and Structures. Amendments to.
What are you going to do about the niggets?
Motion to approve BBC?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners. You have before you the amendments to Article 2 and Article 3, 5, 10, and 13, and 15. You have in your staff report the memo that identifies those items that are listed to be amended and the code sections enumerated to identify each of those as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions to go.
Thank you. Does anyone in the virtual meeting from the public wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to these amendments?
No.
Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Mike, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Nathan?
No questions or comments.
Scott?
Nope.
Chuck?
A quick question for Guy. This venue, in the case of the blueberry farm on, oh, I'm forgetting the road. Anyway, would they have gotten that passed? They had a lot of audience members complain about noise on previous occasions.
Right, I believe so. The noise ordinance will still apply to any uses of the property.
But if they listed themselves as an ag tourism with their blueberries and then rented out their barn, they would have a better chance of getting that venue permit. Is that correct?
I can't speak to that, but they are an ag tourism use.
Brad, we'll leave it there.
All right, Penny?
No questions or comments.
Karen?
None for me.
Steve?
None, thank you.
Gavin?
None.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, then I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended UDC as per our memo.
All right, we have a motion by Chuck.
I'll second Mike Floyd.
Second by Mike. Mike, I don't want to be presumptuous. How do you vote?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Gavin.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved unanimously. Any other business on the agenda? One minor thing. Thanks to Karen for coming up with the idea. We needed to figure out a way to show the podium and pick us a couple of meetings, but we should have it in time for next month when it will be really useful to be able to see the podium.
I can also, I can also help with some Zoom bombing prevention. So I've got a document already written up about it, how to, how to set everything up, and I'll forward that to the folks in the planning department.
That would be fantastic because, you know, as much fun as this was tonight, next month it could be problematic.
Yeah, there's, it's, it happens to a lot of organizations, but there's some pretty easy ways to prevent it. So it's just a matter of knowing which one, what to do.
And for the record, you have absolutely no life if you're, if you're bombing a planning commission meeting. Just, let's just get that on the table right now.
Well, did we have any legitimate folks that were trying to, you know, view the meeting and make comment? No?
Nope.
In that case, a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. Stephen.
Anybody opposed? Thanks, folks. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.